Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 8th Culpeper County School Board Regular Business Meeting. The meeting is now called to order. Ms. Jameson, all members are present. At this time, I would ask everyone in the audience to join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We will now have our presentation and recognitions. Our first recognition, Mrs. Laura Hoover, our Director of Communications, will come down and Dr. Bradz will join her to introduce the V S B A Business Honor Roll. Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
Madam Chair, Dr. Bradz, members of the board, it's an honor to be here tonight to present the 2023 V S B A Business Honor Roll. Businesses large and small play a key role in supporting our community and local schools. They contribute to our schools in many ways, including financial contributions, supporting extracurricular activities, offering internship opportunities, volunteering in our schools, and local businesses have the power to shape community attitudes about our schools. This type of support is invaluable. The V S B A Business Honor Roll allows us to say thank you for their vital contributions. Tonight, C C P S would like to present the 2023 V S B A Business Honor Roll to three local businesses who will receive a certificate of appreciation that says, "The Culpeper Public School Board expresses appreciation for your ongoing support of this community's public schools. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools that we can for every child who attends them." So first, we would like to recognize Battlefield Automotive and Mr. Adam Powell is here to represent Battlefield Automotive. Next, we would like to recognize Career Partners, Ms. Ashley Carter. And our third V S B A Business Honor Roll goes to Martin's Grocery and Mr. Jason Butler. And we thank all of our local businesses for all their support.
One more round of applause for our three businesses. Thank you, Ms. Hoover. And now we will have the presentation for the Student Recognition of the 2023 V H S L Boys and Girls All-State Basketball. And we'll have our coaches come one at a time. Would Coach McCombs come down first, please?
All right, so I'm here to talk about Angie Hiyanku. So Angie, come up here with me, please. Angie is a sophomore, so luckily she's got two more years of eligibility left with us. In her two years at Eastern View, she's a two-time First Team All-District Player, a two-time First Team All-Region Player, two-time All-Area Freelance Star Player. This year, she was the Player of the Year in the Region and also First Team All-State. Angie averaged seventeen points, seven rebounds, three assists, and three steals this year. She had ten games where she scored twenty or more points. She had five double-doubles, helping her get this All-State Honor. And to me, the thing that I can say about her is we can all be proud of her because she represents Culpeper, she represents Eastern View High School, she represents our girls' basketball program, her family, really well. So we can all be proud of Angie Hiyanku.
I will be recognizing Darius Stafford, so like a good coach, he's only as good as his players. So Darius, go ahead and come on forward with me. I always feel calm when he's next to me, so that's a good thing. So I'm proud of Darius for achieving this award. He's the fourth player in our program to do so. Darius led us in scoring, rebounds, and steals. He was First Team All-District along with First Team All-Region as well. He's a great basketball player, but what makes him even better is his character. So I'm proud of him for this, and congratulations, Darius Stafford.
Thank you. And now is a very important time every year. We are going to have the recognition of the Classified Employees of the Year. Mrs. Metzger, our Executive Director of Human Resource, and Dr. Bradz, our Division Superintendent, will be giving the awards to our classified employees.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure this evening to recognize the Culpeper County Public Schools Classified Employees of the Year. These outstanding individuals were nominated by their peers because of their excellence and dedication. They were also interviewed by a panel that consisted of community members, retiree, previous winners, and current classified employees. Their recommendation will be announced as the Culpeper County Classified Employee of the Year. I'm going to read a short biography of each nominee and then ask them to come forward to receive a token of our appreciation, shake hands with our superintendent, and then Mrs. Hoover is going to take a photo and place everybody in line. If you would like to come forward at any time to take a picture on your own, please do so. All right, we are going to start this evening with A.G. Richardson. Deborah Carpenter joined Culpeper County Public Schools as a substitute in 2020 before joining the A.G. Richardson family in 2021 as a special education para educator. In addition to working as a para, she also serves as a substitute custodian. Deborah is an amazing person. Her colleagues describe her as being polite, friendly, and always willing to help in any way possible. She takes initiative and demonstrates patience with all students. She gives her all every day. She often suggests ideas to help students who are struggling academically or behaviorally. She is driven to do whatever it takes to ensure students are successful. She feels that working with students and caring for people is her calling and work that she genuinely enjoys. Deborah was a longtime resident of Pennsylvania for 28 years prior to moving to Virginia. She has two biological children, two stepchildren, and five grandkids with number six due in November. She was married to her husband, Steven, for 42 years before losing him last year when he lost his battle with cancer. In her free time, she enjoys scrapbooking, reading, taking road trips, and enjoying nature. She is also active in her church and enjoys studying the Bible. Deborah is so deserving of this award. It is truly an honor to recognize her as A.G. Richardson's Classified Employee of the Year. Deborah, can you come forward? Jasmine Rivera is Farmington Elementary School's Classified Employee of the Year. Nancy Nelson is the secretary at Emerald Hill Elementary School. She is the friendly face every parent, community member, and staff members see when they enter the office. She is an integral part of the school's environmental management team, but she is also so much She greets everyone with a smile and a happy demeanor. Nancy started her journey at Emerald Hill as a parent in 2011 when her sons started more than that. She is a person always willing to help, no matter what the issue is. attending the school. She became a member of the P T O, eventually becoming the P T O President. She is a translator for administration at five o'clock in the evening when a Spanish-speaking She loved the school so much that when an opening became available in the office, she family needs help. Just two weeks ago, she took a day off for an appointment but stopped by to have her applied for it. She started working at Emerald Hill in 2018. picture taken for this award. Before moving to Culpeper, Nancy taught middle school history for 15 years before having While at the school, she stopped by the cafeteria to say hello to Mr. Sankar. children. She saw that he was short-staffed that day and, without asking, proceeded to help for After having her children, she was a stay-at-home mom. Nancy has two sons, Lucas and Ricky, who both attend C C H S. the next two hours. Outside of school, Jasmine is a volunteer teacher for C D C classes at Precious Blood Her husband Pete can always be found bringing the office lunch, stopping by to pick up Catholic Church. her car for maintenance, and just being a great school husband. She is the wife of Irvin and the mother of Jonathan, who is a student at Yow Elementary. Everyone at Emerald Hill is thankful for Nancy, and we know she deserves to be our In her spare time, Mrs. Rivera continues to work on her English and has earned a para-professional Classified Employee of the Year. Nancy? certificate. So for any principles with openings, you should know that you couldn't get a harder worker. When she relaxes, she enjoys watching movies with her son Jonathan. In short, she is a wonderful human being, and Farmington could not be prouder to be represented by Jasmine Rivera. Jasmine? For 23 years, Rachel Gar has supported the children at Pearl Sample as a para educator. All 23 years, she has worked with the Special Education Preschool Program, which includes some of our neediest students. Rachel loves working with the babies and treats each of them as if they were her own. She shows up day after day with a smile on her face and love for each and every student that she works with. Rachel graduated from Culpeper County High School. Before working at Pearl Sample, she was a stay-at-home mom raising her two girls. Rachel always finds ways to support the kids of Culpeper through volunteering at her daughter's schools, serving as a board member for C F A, or helping coach cheerleading. In her personal time, she likes camping, crafting, and spending time with her three grandbabies, and she has one more on the way. Overall, Rachel exemplifies the phrase, "We are Pearl Sample." She is known for her infectious smile, positivity, and, most importantly, her "do whatever it takes" attitude. Rachel is a key member of the preschool team and the Pearl family overall. Congratulations, Rachel. Christina Adams. Christina is a para educator at Sycamore Park Elementary School. She graduated from Culpeper County High School, and after taking classes at Jermana, she worked as a bank teller and customer service representative for eight and a half years. At that time, along with her partner Craig, they started their family, and she became a stay-at-home mom. Christina has two children, Peyton, a seventh grader at Floyd T. Benz, and Landon, in second grade at Sycamore Park. When Peyton moved on to middle school, Ms. Adams decided to apply for a para educator position at Sycamore Park. Christina and her family are very active in their church, as well as the Culpeper Filipino-American community. Family is very important to her, and she enjoys spending time with her family outdoors. During the summer, they enjoy going to Laguna and the beach. Along with spending time with her family, Ms. Adams loves to sing karaoke and travel. Her favorite trip was a safari to South Africa where she got to pet a cheetah. Sycamore Park would like to thank Ms. Christina Adams for her dedication and all of the support she gives our school and students. The school is blessed to have her as a valued employee. Congratulations, Christina. Erica Parkinson is the Behavior Interventionist at Yow Elementary. Erica graduated from C C H S in the top 10 of her class and went on to Virginia Tech and became the first college graduate in her family. With her degree, she pursued a profession working in mental health and student behavior. Prior to coming to Yow, she was a Behavior Interventionist at Sycamore Park, worked for National Counseling Group, and was a preschool teacher. At Yow, Erica wears many hats and is a constant ray of light when things are tough. She is quick to jump in and assist. She is consistent, firm, and loving, giving students and teachers opportunities to grow and learn from situations in a very real way. She is such an amazing asset to Yow. Little-known fact is that Erica was a baton twirler growing up and performed in the halftime show of the 2003 Capital One Bowl Game in Florida. Erica's husband Travis is a health and P E teacher at Eastern View High School. They have two daughters, Avery, who attends C M S, and Olive, who is in kindergarten at Yow. In her free time, she enjoys being active, thrifting plants, and watching her girls do things that they love. Congratulations, Erica. Lisa Thorne is in her 19th year as a school security officer. She began her career at Culpeper County High School and worked there for 14 years before moving to Culpeper Middle School. Prior to finding her true passion, she obtained a bachelor's degree in Administration of Criminal Justice with a minor in Sociology. She worked as a director of a childcare facility and a counselor at a drug rehab facility for adolescents. Ms. Thorne is a workhorse for both C M S and C C H S, attending after-school events through every season. Her lightheartedness and humor make it a joy to work with her. She is dedicated to our students, staff, and the overall Culpeper community. Lisa's pride and joy are her sons, Eric and Jason. Eric is 26 years old and is an engineer living in Florida. Jason is 22. He is in the Army stationed in Texas. During her free time, Lisa enjoys traveling, gardening, and being a gym rat. Congratulations to Ms. Thorne for being selected as the Classified Employee of the Year for Culpeper Middle School. Alita Vivas is a special education para educator in the self-contained multiple disabilities classroom at Floyd T. Benz. This is her second year at Floyd T. Benz. Alita attended Gibbs College and earned an associate's degree in applied science. She is a certified medical assistant and phlebotomist. She is also certified in clinical problem-solving and human physiology from the University of California, along with a business certification from Nova. Prior to working at Benz, Alita worked as a medical reviewer for Customs and Border Protection and Veterans Affairs. She has volunteered at NuVant Health in the Surgery Department and is currently an E S L instructor at Piedmont Regional Adult and Career Education Center. Alita is married with one son, Anthony, who is in eighth grade at Benz. In her spare time, although we're not sure she has much of that, she loves exploring nature, hiking, and reading books by her favorite author, James Patterson. Alita is an asset to the Floyd T. Benz family. She is such a positive person with a great spirit. Being the Classified Employee of the Year is well-deserved, and everyone at Benz is proud of you. Congratulations. Anne Skyler is in her fifth year as registrar at Culpeper County High School. She came with 34 years of experience from Xerox Corporation and Epiphany Catholic School. Her work ethic is inspiring. She works hard to make sure everything is finished and thorough. She is extremely knowledgeable and versatile in her duties, such as transcripts, college scholarship information, driving permits, new enrollments, and promoting and celebrating scholarship opportunities. Her files and data collection organization are impeccable. Anne is a perfect fit for C C H S. She is positive, kind, and cares about us. She cares deeply for all the students and staff that come through her office and builds deep, positive relationships. She takes care of everyone in the front office for birthdays and other celebrations. She visits classrooms to make sure new students understand where to go or what bus to take. Anne listens to students in distress and sits with her students for daily check-ins when counselors are not available. Anne never complains and always has a smile. Anne and her husband Mike have two children. They love Culpeper. Their children are both C C P S graduates, one from each high school. Anne deserves the highest of accolades for her positivity, dedication, and hard work. Congratulations, Anne. Jesse McClanahan is a remarkable school security officer. Jesse has consistently demonstrated conscientiousness and genuine commitment to all E V H S staff and students. Jesse always finds a way to connect with every individual and displays notable respect for each person. This respect is mutual and shared with his colleagues and students. He strives to build trust and meaningful connections with all students and teaches them to do the same with each other. Jesse's colleagues describe him as a true asset to E V H S. He is seemingly everywhere at once, and it is a comfort to know that in an emergency, he will quite literally come running to help anyone who needs it. Mr. McClanahan is a veteran law enforcement officer of 20 years, all in Culpeper County, and an Army veteran. We are thankful for his service to our community as well as to our nation. In addition to ensuring school safety during the day, he works most evening school events and yet volunteers to coach Little League football as well. He is married and a father of three and enjoys small-engine repairs and welding. We are extremely lucky to have Jesse McClanahan as part of the E V H S family. Congratulations, Jesse. We are pleased to recognize Charles, otherwise known as Chuck Dove, as the Classified Employee of the Year from the Maintenance Department. In 2014, after a short stint with Environmental Services, Chuck joined the department as one of our painters. To our pleasant surprise, he came with many talents in the building trades fields. Without reservation, he has been willing to tackle any and all challenges sent his way, always one willing to assess his fellow workers to complete tasks in an efficient manner. With our painting program being moved to the day shift, his ability to be flexible and work with school staff has taken the program to a whole new level. Chuck also carries the distinction of one of our few facility staff members as part of the wellness program that needed to put on weight instead of lose weight. Here's to many more sweet teas and Pepsi. Congratulations, Chuck. Moving on to Technology. Donnie Rogers is a network technician who grew up in Culpeper. He attended Virginia Tech, where he is a member of the Corps of Cadets. He learned what it takes to be a member of a team. Since coming to the Technology Department, Donnie has exemplified what it means to be a colleague, a problem solver, and a leader. He consistently works to improve his knowledge and how best to find resolutions to some of the most complicated issues. Staff throughout the division recognize Donnie and know they are in good hands when he arrives to assist with their technology issues. In addition, Donnie has a work ethic considered to be second to none. Just recently, he hurt himself while working at a school. Even though he injured his ankle, he still completed the assigned project before seeking medical attention. This speaks to his drive and dedication to making sure the task at hand is done to completion. Donnie also has the unique privilege of being in the very first poison control commercial for the state of Virginia. Donnie was bitten by a copperhead while at Rattlesnake Point on Skyline Drive at age seven. This event made him a temporary star in the minds of the public. He remains a superstar in the Technology Department. Congratulations, Donnie.
With our painting program being moved to the day shift, his ability to be flexible and work with school staff has taken the program to a whole new level. Chuck also carries the distinction of one of our few facility staff members as part of the wellness program that needed to put on weight instead of lose weight. Here's to many more sweet teas and Pepsi. Congratulations, Chuck.
Moving on to technology. Donnie Rogers is a network technician who grew up in Culpeper. He attended Virginia Tech, where he is a member of the Corps of Cadets. He learned what it takes to be a member of a team. Since coming to the technology department, Donnie has exemplified what it means to be a colleague, a problem solver, and a leader. He consistently works to improve his knowledge and how best to find resolutions to some of the most complicated issues. Staff throughout the division recognize Donnie and know they are in good hands when he arrives to assist with their technology issues. In addition, Donnie has a work ethic considered to be second to none. Just recently, he hurt himself while working at a school. Even though he injured his ankle, he still completed the assigned project before seeking medical attention. This speaks to his drive and dedication to making sure the task at hand is done to completion. Donnie also has the unique privilege of being in the very first poison control commercial for the state of Virginia. Donnie was bitten by a copperhead while at Rattlesnake Point on Skyline Drive at age seven. This event made him a temporary star in the minds of the public. He remains a superstar in the technology department.
Congratulations, Donnie.
Okay, our transportation department. Teresa Caparicio is the lead bus driver trainer for the transportation department. She began her school bus driver career 18 years ago with Rappahannock County Public Schools and became a driver trainer about eight years ago. Teresa was nominated and chosen by her peers for this recognition because she goes above and beyond in her work. Taking the initiative to become a third-party DMV tester for all new bus driver candidates has allowed us to get new drivers on the road sooner because we do not have to wait for outside testing. Teresa has worked tirelessly to update the local training program to match the VDOE requirements. She is responsible for scheduling all training classes to include initial training, remedial training, special education training, and CPR and first aid. Overall, Teresa has shown her willingness to take on any opportunity, no matter how complicated, and exceeds in each task. In addition to her work with CCPS, Teresa assists the Treasure of Trinity Episcopal Church with monthly bookkeeping and volunteers with the Virginia State Police, the Volker County Fair, and has put in many, many hours with band boosters, planning out fundraisers. Teresa has been blessed with a son and granddaughter and loves to sew, bird hunt with her dogs, and skeet shoot in her spare time.
Congratulations, Teresa.
From our central office, Becky Recamore. After working as a substitute in special education classrooms at Sycamore for six years, we were fortunate to have Becky Recamore join the central office instruction department. Her positive attitude and willingness to help everyone with any project made her a great fit. As home instruction liaison, she's developed relationships with families and can frequently be heard helping one of 800-plus parents through the home instruction process. This year, she's added a home instruction page to the division's website to make access to information more readily available to parents. As textbook coordinator, she efficiently fulfills school requests and new orders. She oversees the management of over 30,000 textbooks. Becky continues to provide service to the department by helping all the curriculum specialists with whatever might be happening that given week, whether it is a mock interview, proofing a document, or processing GovSchool applications. As the unofficial morale officer, Becky helps recognize birthdays, coordinates lunches, organizes memorial donations, and keeps us laughing. She is a great listener when someone is having a rough day, and she provides an overall positive atmosphere in our cozy office space. In her downtime, Becky likes to travel with her husband Sean, daughter Sarah, and son Max. This summer, they will explore the Western U.S., but I guarantee she won't be camping. Becky?
Okay, moving on to the Phoenix Alternative Education Center, Mr. Mark Dennis. Mark is a 2005 graduate of Culpeper County High School. Since 2012, he has served the students of CCHS as a para educator, coach, and mentor, and is in his second year as school security officer at Phoenix. Mark is held in the highest regard by his colleagues and the students. The rapport he builds significantly contributes to the sense of safety and wellness felt at Phoenix. He works collaboratively with the other SSOs on campus and maintains effective communication with both to provide overall campus security. He participates in required training and stays up to date on all safety drills and the written communication that follows. Mr. Dennis is visible in the halls every day, and students feel comfortable coming to him with any concerns. They trust him enough to provide information when needed and follow his directions when given. Mark and his wife Julie have two children, Michaela, age 12, and Logan, age 5. They enjoy spending time at the Outer Banks. He also keeps himself busy working on music, working out, playing golf, football, or basketball when he is not cutting hair or doing photography professionally. Mr. Mark Dennis is proud to be a member of the Culpeper community and, in his words, wants people to live up to their potential. He certainly does.
Congratulations, Mark.
And last but not least is Culpeper Technical Education Center. Tasha Newpenton has been the CTEC school security officer since the building opened in 2021. Prior to joining CCPS, she worked as an SSO in Manassas City Schools. Tasha is an outstanding SSO with a keen eye for detail and organization. Her many responsibilities as an SSO include maintaining safety plans, the school crisis plan, and offering PD for our teachers on safety and security measures. She does all of this in a way that helps all students and staff in the building not only feel safe but seen and cared for. In addition to being a top-notch security officer, Tasha is a jack-of-all-trades, willing to support our greater mission in any way needed. She covers classes and assists the main office when needed, and she stands in for support during skills assessments. When everyone else has checked out for the day, Tasha changes hats and keeps working at CTEC. In addition to her day job, Tasha works as a custodian four out of five nights a week to cover the building while Germana Community College holds classes in the CTEC Automobile Lab. She spends more time at CTEC than anyone. Tasha is an all-around team player. She has a positive attitude and is always willing to lend a hand to anyone that needs it. Our students respect her, and she has a great rapport with all of them. CTEC would not be the same without her wonderful presence. Tasha?
Thank you to everyone. Shall we give everybody one more round of applause? Yes. Okay, and the winner this year, the 2022-23 certified or classified employee of the year is Teresa Caparicio, who unfortunately is not here, but her director, her director Stephen Bagley is. So Stephen, please pass along the best wishes. Stand there with your flowers, please. Thank you, everyone.
Everyone ready? We will continue now with the meeting. That was exciting, and congratulations to everybody. Our next item on the agenda. We do not have any student or principal reports, so we are up to delegations. As far as I know, no one has signed up for delegations. Is anyone in the audience which to address the board? Phew, okay, we will move on. And number six is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now up to our action items. The first one is an approval of a resolution. I will read the resolution. This is the Teacher Appreciation Resolution. Whereas education is a grand and powerful profession, worthy to be honored and respected, and whereas excellence in education begins in the classrooms of our nation's schools, and whereas teachers are among the professional educators who are charged with the responsibility of helping to shape the destiny of our country by training and guiding our children, youth, and adults, and whereas teachers are and will continue to be a dynamic force in the educational process, they demonstrate through their sense of purpose and dedication to their profession that they are a major source of inspiration to our students. And whereas teachers in Culpeper County are to be commended for their perseverance, selflessness, engagement, and concern for the social, emotional, and academic growth of their students during the pandemic. And whereas the teachers of Culpeper County consistently document their professional competence and commitment to students through their willingness to give of their time, energy, talents, and ideas, they are to be praised for the progress our students are making. And whereas our teachers should be deeply respected and highly recognized for the contributions they have made to our county, our state, and our nation. Therefore, be it resolved that the Culpeper County School Board salutes its teachers and expresses their deepest appreciation for a job well-done. To be adopted May 8, 2023, by the Culpeper County School Board. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda, action item. The approval of the CCPS salary scales for 2023-24. Dr. Brad, do you want to say anything?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I just want to remind the board that this is the process by which we approve the scales for the coming fiscal year. We do that after the Board of Supervisors has acted on the budget, and I'll have a little bit of an update on that under the superintendent's report on the FY24 budget. But again, we, administration recommends approval of the salary scales and Item C, also the supplemental scales. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brad. Is there a motion to approve the salary scale for 2023-24? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. A motion for approval of supplementary scales for the 2023-2024 school year. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item D, approval of the CCPS CTE local plan for 2023-2024.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Hallman and Ms. Randy Richards-Lutz are here today if you have any questions about the submission of the 23-24 CTE plan.
Board members, are there any questions? Therefore, is there a motion to approve? Discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Hutchins?
I just have a couple of comments. I want to say that I continue to be impressed with what we're able to offer our students through CTE and the amount of student participation in our CTE programs. And I hope that we continue to work to get some non-traditional partners, business folks, as well as getting more non-traditional students in in different programs. It's something that I know we've worked on for years, and I know we will continue to do so. Very pleased to see the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins. Are there any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. E, permission to apply for the Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, and thank you, Ms. Hutchins, for front-loading this item, actually, and maybe didn't even know it. Virginia School Board Association has an application process to demonstrate exemplary work in workforce readiness, workforce preparedness. There's a tight window in terms of applying for this recognition, but applying for this recognition also requires school board approval before the deadline. So we have the preliminary plan of what we would submit. We may have to do some revisions by the time we submit it, but at this time, we're asking for the board to approve our request to apply for the VSBA award related to workforce readiness. Ms. Randy Richards-Lutz, appreciate Randy putting this together very rapidly. Once this came out, I would say, I'm kind of late from VSBA, actually, but because of what we do exactly in that realm of workforce readiness and preparedness and the CTE courses that we offer, we felt, yes, we need to do this. So Ms. Randy Richards-Lutz is here if you would have any questions about what we would like to submit for this recognition. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Lutz? Without any questions, oh, Ms. Brown?
Similar to Ms. Hutchins' comment, I would like to thank Ms. Lutz for putting in the work that she does every day, along with setting this up for us. It doesn't come to you, it comes to us, but your work has always been incredible. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I think we all concur. Is there a motion to approve the application?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And F, approval of the VSBA Policy Services Agreement, which would be June 1, 2023, through May 31, 2024.
I move to approve.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. We will now move on to the superintendent and staff reports. A is superintendent's update, the fiscal year '24 budget. Dr. Brad, all yours.
Do I start with what we know or what we don't know? I'll just start with what we don't know. No, we do not have a state budget at this time. We've had staff members ask questions about what component of the governor's recommendations are in the budget for FY24, and we cannot answer that question because we're uncertain as to what's in there. As you know, we've prepared, based on the estimates that we have from the General Assembly estimates, version of the Senate, version of the House, version of the skinny budget, et cetera, et cetera. But taking that information on anticipated revenue from the state, we've prepared with your approval a budget, and subsequently, the Board of Supervisors have also prepared that budget. Just today, I believe, Ms. Metzger, if I'm correct, today, contracts going out, going out tomorrow, going out tomorrow with respect to the prepared budget. Again, and we're making the statement that all of those contracts are subject to available funding. And that's not a super comfortable statement to make, but it is fact because we do not know exactly what the revenue situation will be from the Commonwealth. But guardily optimistic that we will get at or near what we need to fulfill the spending plan that the board has approved and the Board of Supervisors has approved. and the Board of Supervisors has approved. Last week, May 2nd, the board approved, as you all know, it is a reassessment year for real estate. And upon real estate reassessment and their, yeah, equalization rate policy, that the equalization rate would have gone from 55 cents down to 44 cents. With some initiatives coming, the supervisors felt that they needed to increase that. So effectively, there's a two-cent increase to go with real estate being 46 cents. That's going to be a breakout of 38 cents for real estate and eight cents for the fire and rescue levy. The other personal property tax, recordation tax, machine and tools tax, all of those other taxes remain the same for the next fiscal year. They weren't really affected by the reassessment. Our CIP was approved, our FY budget, FY24 budget was approved, as, as I mentioned. And very importantly, the, the budget resolution was approved by the Board of Supervisors in order to release those funds for us for next year. Be happy to answer any questions. I won't rehash all the numbers. We've been there in terms of total budget, CIP budget, food, food service budget, those kinds of things, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Our staff's happy to answer any questions you may have about FY24. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brad. Mr. Shomo, our finance report.
As Dr. Brad said, you know, the information is kind of dwindling in a little bit this year instead of in the past. And, but one thing we do have now is the firm count on the ADM. This count here was, is for April numbers. And the March numbers are going to be at 8127, which is a reduction of about 139 students. So we're projecting on that number because that's what we paid on. But you can see the variation even between months have, fluctuates, which this is a good number here, that's going back the other direction. The next one that we'll focus on is revenues. These revenues numbers here had a construction amount in it, but the actual amount that we were going to get for ADM, operating numbers, is going to be somewhere in the realm of about 65 million from the state, which is going to put us pretty much on course with the expenditures that we're tracking for operating. The monthly expenditures basically are exactly tracking, kind of like they did last year for a standard year, nothing really out of ordinary. You can see here, these numbers here are the actual numbers per, percentage of per month. This was this year, last year was almost exactly the same. This time last year, we're exactly at 34% remaining to spend in the budget, which means that, you know, with that in mind, we're kind of right now with the numbers we have and the ADM we have, we're projecting probably a bottom line of about a million nine, which is a little bit, about 1.5% of the budget. So we have 34% of that budget to spend. Hopefully, at the end of that, we'll have somewhere in a percent to a percent and a half or two percent of that to remain. So right now, I mean, we're tracking, and anything's kind of still hodgepodge, but you know, there's enough we have to receive from Richmond, yet enough to say to go on with our plans. Because we hold back to make sure we got the plans. But the next 40 to 60 days, we got things we got to do to make sure that, you know, it gets off to a good start for next year and also end up this year good. We've been holding some projects and stuff. We've got to turn loose, maintenance issues that we, you know, we want to take care of before we get out of the year. So all in all, it feels kind of a little weird, but at the same time, it's good compared to the last couple of years we've come out of. So right now, I mean, we're still on course, still on the, on the plan, and we're going forward. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Shomo? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. O'Brien? Our operations report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Brad, I'm happy to give you the last operations department briefing here as we get near the end of the school year, so it's an exciting time. First off, we've done some very necessary repairs of Pearl Sample. If you might know the area, when you come down, there's a bit of a patch that started to grow a quite bit larger, and some of our buses had a hard time getting down that side of the road. So we did some patchwork to take care of the road there, as well as we did some repairs on some dishwashers. We did, one of the advantages of getting a new roof on the bus garage is we actually increased its capacity to get the water off of it. But part of what we had to do was make sure those drain pipes were all cleared out and running correctly. So we did a little bit of work on that front, as well as repaired an HVAC bearing over at Sea Tech. Actually, Dr. Brad's noticed this, when we were at Farmington, we have a nice big field that had a lot of patches in it, and we realized almost immediately that a lot of the community likes to use our fields. So we've taken the step to go ahead and reseed that field and put some straw down to try to get the grass to take to make it a little more durable in the coming, throughout the summer and into the fall. We did some repairs on, on the door, specifically in one location, the door had a hard time closing, and we want to make sure that we acknowledge that security risk and make sure that all doors closes as they are supposed to. Other items, you can read there, we did our quarterly sprinkle test, checked all the exit lights, making sure they were working, and did our generator checks. Also did some grease trap service, even though I know that's not the funnest thing to talk about. It's imperative because there is a fire hazard if you don't do that. Food service, gives me a little bit of heartburn. We still tend to be down in terms from where we were last year to where we are this year, as well as how our daily average looks when we compare April back to March. So you could see that our numbers are down overall in terms of our food service. And we've been working, I know I've talked to Mr. Beamer specifically about bringing back Asian chicken, because I hear it all the time from the kids. It's one of the things, they're like, you bring back Asian chicken, I'll buy it every day. So we're, we're doing our best. We're figuring out how we could get that back on the menu. Technology, we've done a lot of camera installs. We are 97% complete. I might have made a, an error the last time I did a Friday report when I said we were 100%. We were 100% at CCHS, but there's still a few more cameras we're working at Eastern View. But we're, we're almost there, and we'll certainly be done by the end of the year. They've had a lot of tickets that they've closed, as well as, you know, still working the Chromebooks as they come in, and working on the Eastern View High School sound system, trying to get that repaired to include the cafeteria as well as the auditorium. For transportation, we've done what we call our final routing as we near the end of the year. Currently, we routed 6,273 students, while back in December, we were at 6,267. Of course, as I mentioned before, you know, seasonal sports always play a role, and we do get a little bit of a, of a pickup right here at the end as some spring sports start to finish. I also want to make it known that we also do a lot of summer routing. So we're going to be routing for ESY and our summer academy, and those requests were all completed by May 5th, which was last week. And we have that happening at CCHS, as well as select elementary schools. We also have a lot of outplacements. We still have 13 days of Ivy Creek that we're going to be providing transportation for. We have students in Manassas, Stafford, Fredericksburg, and also some Keys Academy runs as well. So even though we're getting to summer, transportation still continues moving forward. And our new stop-arm camera systems, we have 97 buses completed. There were only eight buses left, which they're supposed to finish this week, which I'm eager to see. This is the report, and something to keep in mind, this is paid violation. So I was very curious about, well, how many times is a camera being triggered? So I asked Bus Patrol today, I'm like, hey, can you give me that number? Because normally, they wait till the 10th of the month to send me the, what they call the financial readout. Well, in this case, she contacted me back, and she said in March, we had 68 violations. In other words, the camera was triggered 68 times. And then in April, which was the date I wanted to see, because I wanted to see if it changed with the whole fleet, 240. So it is significant. The amount of violations that are happening, the amount of times these cameras are being triggered is significant. I don't know how many will be paid in terms of paid violations, but hopefully, the next time we meet, you'll see April and see what that column looks like. We've, we've been working, we've been talking with the Sheriff's Department as well, with those that handle it. We, we want to make sure that they understand the increase is coming and to be prepared for that. But that's all I have. Tried to make it quick and easy this evening. Do you have any questions that I might be able to answer?
Are there any questions, Ms. Hutchins?
Going back to the EV sound system.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it a repair or is it a replacement?
Based on the price, it's mostly replacement, because I think the parts that they have to get are in high demand and are difficult to acquire. They, what I hear from my technicians in the field is that the system never was to par where it needed to be. So they're taking the immediate steps to make sure we get what is necessary to provide for the sound system, especially in the auditorium.
Well, that's not what the school board was told when it was installed, because we were told it was top of the line. So, I know it is not.
Was that in 2008?
That was when the school was finished.
Yeah, so that might have been top of the line then, but...
No, because it has never worked well. It has never worked well. And I am so grateful this is finally happening because it is so embarrassing to have the public come in there and have our students on stage, particularly drama presentations, and you cannot hear anything unless you're on the first four rows. And I am extremely grateful that this is finally being fixed. Thank you.
Yes, I agree, thank you, absolutely.
Thank you, I just thought I was going deaf. Any other comments? Thank you, Dr. O'Brien.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we have those reports, and now we're up to the board member reports, or board member comments. Ms. Burnett, we want to start with you? Of course, right?
Of course. Again, I wanted to say congratulations to our all-state basketball student athletes. Thank you for representing our district so well. And big congratulations and thank you to our classified, classified employees. Thank you so much, and to all staff for making this such a great year so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Ms. Desaline?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I also wanted to just express my gratitude for the classified employees of the year, but the whole team behind them as well. To me, seeing all the different, and hearing the different stories of all the different schools and all these different roles in the schools just really exemplifies what Culpeper Schools are about and the team. And it's not just those employees, but the whole group together, and it makes me very proud to be part of the school system here. And, you know, when we were talking about each of the two students, both of their coaches mentioned their character being such a great example, and that's so good to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Desaline. Ms. Luckenbill?
I would just like to wish happy graduation season to our seniors and our families. The next time we meet, graduation will be finished. And it's just such a wonderful experience in the life of a student and a family. Ms. Lutz has one happening this year, and I apologize if there are others that I'm missing. All the best to our seniors.
Thank you, Ms. Luckenbill. Ms. Smith?
Honestly, just ditto to what everyone has said, and, and an appreciation to our staff. This is a really busy time of year. It's exciting, but it's very busy, and they don't slow down. They still continue to pour 110%, and I just want to say thank you for that.
Mrs. Hutchins?
Thank you. I was thrilled to attend the concerts, all of the band concerts this season. It's a wonderful time to see the accomplishments and the progress that the students have made, and it's extremely impressive. Congratulations to the students and their directors. Mountain Vista Governor's School Senior Recognition was a thrill to be there to, as a member of the foundation, to prevent, present scholarships to some very well-deserving seniors. And then the Career Partners Finals for E-Squared were, was electric. It was an exciting year, and glad to see that, as well as participate in the special games and see the students enjoying that day as well. And I was extremely proud of the classified employees, because one of them was one of my former students. So I'm very, I'm very proud of him, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchins. Ms. Brown?
I could reiterate everything that was said here, because it is all very true. The other thing that I would like to add is that I'd like to thank all the employees putting on graduation, the graduations at the various schools that go on, the end-of-the-year activities, the amount of time and effort that every individual that works in our school system puts forth to make all this happen. And it has always been about the children for our employees. So I thank them and encourage everybody to re-sign for another year, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I could say the same as everyone, because I think I was at most of the events, and I do know that HR, they work really, really hard to put on a really good show. They are great party planners. Thank you, Ms. Metzger, and your whole crew. Dr. Brad, did you want to say anything today? Okay. Smart man, smart man. Okay, let's see, let's move on then. We are up to information items. On Board Ducks, you will find the summary of the school board committee reports, the membership for April 2023. And on the week of May 8th through 12th, which is this week, we are having Appreciation Week for our nurses. And May 15th through 19th is Employee Appreciation Week for executive directors and our directors. Most of them are probably sitting right here. The future meeting dates. The Culpeper County School Board Capital Planning Committee is May 10th at 8:30 in the morning. The business, Culpeper County School Board Business Work Session, May 22nd. The Administration Committee, June 6th. Finance Committee would be June 12th at the County Administration Office, and our regular meeting, June 12th at the County Administration Office. There's nothing else to be said? Is there a motion to go into closed session? Oh, yes, ma'am.
One correction on that, it came out late this afternoon at the advice of the administration. We're going to be canceling Capital Planning Committee for this Wednesday. Still waiting on budget information, so that one will not be happening this week. Okay?
Since I'm on that committee, that's really good news. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Desaline. Now, Ms. Smith, would you read this into closed session?
Yeah, make a motion that the school board convene a closed session to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The appointment of certified personnel, the appointment of classified personnel, the transfer of certified personnel, the transfer of classified personnel, the separation of certified personnel, the separation of classified personnel, the approval of substitute teachers for 2223, the approval of spring coaching supplements for 2223 CCHS, the approval of spring coaching supplements for 2223 EVHS, the approval of spring coaching supplements for 2223 for CMS and Floyd T. Benz, and the discussion of student matters related to named students A, religious exemption, and named student B, VHSL transfer rule appeal on the record as permitted by the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A2.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries.